Dog bays for pathways, we've done around. We did approval for the Wash, Wash, other complex sign which you got that added tonight, I failed to save it on the agenda. We have the flagpole that has been delivered to the Wabashaw Athletic Complex, it's a fifty foot pole. Most of the money was donated from that, from the F W Legion Clubs. And we'll get that in the south hopefully for the grand opening so they can do a military presentation there. We relocate ground equipment from the old athletic field, it's nothing special, but it's better than nothing, the wood structure down there, we actually found a roof with. So we got that move.
Where did it come?
Right out kind of more by the warming house, give kids something to do. So falls apart, I guess. Rooker Park fell here and shingles need to be replaced. And we actually got somebody that has to do community services, he's gonna leave the project, he's like contractor in town, so we're just gonna offer it to people. And then he's gotta do a report on it, so actually worked out good for us. We're gonna order some more certified wood chips for the park over here and then Rooker Park, cause some of it's settled. Since we originally put it in and then we have a new amendment going in there with that swing, so we need to get everything up to level. We talked about the restroom water heater that's finally over here last fall, so we're working on getting a replacement for that. And we got one more bench that was approved for Beach Park, donated bench. Pretty full.
Still a little bit going on.
Okay, Jordan, what are we gonna do with all the? Not really sure if I will watch it. You know, it's a lot different with the now we got internal. Now you're seeing all the thing, the cable, steel cables of the road which breaks every three years. But I'm only gonna buy it. Yeah, what do you know?
All right, planning missions.
We didn't mean, our next means.
All right, and Darren.
All right, I don't really have a whole lot to report from the last time I was up here, but we had ten, twelve. Firefighters and ten classes over in Austin and up in Duluth, and we just completed them. We have a horse burn plan for August thirteenth, April thirteenth on the Prairie, so that's set up for Saturday. That's the best screening we can have, so we got that lined up and then that's kind of where we're at, so nothing new from there and that's that.
All right, and then Ryan, I'm assuming you'll stick around for this paramedic item that just came, so we'll, we'll, we'll address this item on general business, which is the. Fair Department Building Edition Project Bid, which we knew would come late, just because it was received yesterday. And I don't know if you want to run through any of it with us, it's pretty straightforward agenda item, anything you want us to know?
Nothing much, I guess, you know, Caroline's got the numbers there, but I guess, you know, he, he took the lowest bidder, of course, and, you know, the bid is pretty close. And the one thing I'd like to say is, you know, we kind of. The bid's over by a little bit, but we, we guess, when the engineer came down and went to the building. He was asking about our ventilation system down there for inside the garage and. We just didn't have one. So our building wasn't actually up to code. And so by doing this addition and putting in, then we put that. HVAC system where the ventilation system that has to be in that garage, has to be in that building into the, the bid, so. When the contractors came and bid the, the, the project that was part of that. That ventilation system alone is ninety thousand dollars. So in all them HVAC or the ventilation bids all came in within a few thousand dollars, so we know what we're looking at, but. If we went to have that in the, in the bid, the bid would came in about three ten, three twenty. Which would have been way below what we're looking at, but would have been in the ballpark, so. Being that that had to be put in place, we're up to what, four thirty? With the con, with the architect fees, which were twenty eight thousand dollars and. We had, we had to put some money in there for like, what was it again? Yeah, so we came up and go over, we need something that goes, but I think that. Can I say the lowest bid or what? The lowest bid on there, I think, was like three seventy eight or something like that, so three hundred and seventy eight thousand. And then you add in all of other fees and it came out to four thirty five, right?
Oh, pretty good. Yeah, pretty good guest meeting, right? Questions for. Or an update about where we are at this level of contemplating the broader facility needs of the city? Does that have a chance to meet yet? No, no, okay, so this is our first bit of information since we last saw each other, any questions for Darren?
I just had that we had budgeted four hundred and ten thousand in the CIP. That we had originally thought was gonna be borrowed funds, but we got the Public Safety Award. Do the state this year of about a hundred ten, so that will help, and then the rest will be out of cash, we've been diligently trying to add cash. There to differentiate the, and then we're expecting about nineteen thousand to come out of Darren's operations account. With the replacement. It's approved that thirty thousand contingency, it could come in more. If there's other unexpected issues, then we can come back for an additional.
Very good. All right.
We have a recommendation to award the bid, does anybody want to make? Do you have a question, Dean?
Oh, second.
A second for Ryan, further discussion.
The equipment placement pump, how bad is twenty thousand dollars in the damage then?
The total amount is thirty five thousand.
Thirty five, okay, yeah, thirty five. Is that gonna take a significant hit to that account?
It usually don't, I mean, I can't say what it's gonna do the rest of the year, but we always have that thirty five thousand dollars kind of in the equipment placement account or. If we have mechanical issues with the truck, et cetera, so last year we did have a couple pump issues and it cost us an extra twelve or fifteen thousand dollars and that came out of that fund, so. Let's hope that everything's okay when we got that, got back to play with, so. Give us a little bit of flexibility.
Anything further, we have first, we have a second.
Do we have the plans for this? I don't, I was starting missing somewhere. What's our potential drawings and what's?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were sent it all. I remember you were in this all that case. Brian, you, I know you.
I think they sent it, they sent them to me separate.
But I know that we've got.
Just to look at it, yeah.
It wasn't asking us the name of your last one, we've been before then.
Yeah.
So all contractors just got the very pretty same plan.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they, they went all for bids and, you know, we had three contractors come back and put bids with that.
Yeah, so they're using the same architecture plan.
Yes, same everybody, I see the other original ones. Yeah, we've been going through this, the same architectural outfit out of one on us, so he's been with us the whole ride, so.
I don't know if you want to describe it, I don't have a copy of the plans.
It's just a thirty by eighty out the back of the building, so it's pretty much, yeah, pretty basic thing there and. If, yeah, so we're looking at that addition on there plus the.
Exhaust.
The exhaust thing coming in, which is huge, I guess I wasn't too.
Talking, I mean, that's gonna be a thing.
Yeah. Yeah, we have one regardless of what we did, what addition or not, it just happened to be part of a, part of the plan or part of the deal, but. We also have the rebuilding of the damaged part of the building from insurance and that, they're gonna rescan three, three portions of that building, so. Well, we're looking at a whole new wrap around that whole building, so I think we're looking at some.
We've been talking about the exhaust for years as well, haven't we? Yes, I remember ever since being on here, we've been talking about it.
Yeah.
Kind of like everything, we talk about it, we never do anything about it.
Yeah, when he came down and looked at it, he was just, I think we kind of. Stunned him a little bit with why, how we're operating without it and, you know, so it'll be, it'll be good, better get it done.
Yeah, there's smoke ups down there, they don't even look up to the new trucks, so my ass all day.
All right, we have a first and we have a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Thanks for your patience, thanks for your. I'll tell them, I tell them this, you're free to stay, it's a thrilling agenda ahead tonight, but if you need to go, we understand, and we'll have, we'll go back. For our regularly scheduled program and our audit tonight. One second to settle.
That never happens. See you guys.
So I will bring up the presentation, either you can tell me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we. I'm gonna access a different way, cause we put it on our website, so.
We just, we have, I mean, you have a lot of pride.
All right, I'll, I'll get it larger, I just need a. My presentation.
Take it home. Yeah, take the old one out, I have a really copy of them all.
Okay, just to make everyone aware, we are, we have put all these audits and final audit presentations online for viewing at any time. All right. Okay.
Awesome, so thanks for having me tonight, my name is Tyler C, audio guy for Cavo. And I'll here present the twenty twenty three financial statement audit. So this presentation might be, you know, more of a high level review of the audits. Kind of give you the main points, results, financial results, some you need to note out without getting, you know, we lost all the details of the big audit report, so. What I'm going over is our audit opinion and responsibility as auditors. I'll then go over the general fund results, so the other governmental funds, and then the enterprise fund results, and then I'll end it with some deep performance indicators. So first of all, our responsibility as auditors is to issue an opinion on the city's financial statements. We are issuing what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean audit opinion. So the opinion you would be striving for in a financial statement audit. We also do some testing on Minnesota legal compliance throughout the audits, so that's your own state statute. We also don't have any legal compliance issues to note in this year's audits. And then this year, because of the federal funding received. The city had what's called a signal audit, which is basically just more compliance and control testing around those federal programs. So we tested like a PFA program this year and stuff like that. And we also have no instances of not compliance noted with the signal portions at all, so clean audit opinion that I know compliance issues. Moving on to the next slide, though, we however did have some internal control findings this year in the audit. That first, upon preparation of financial statements, that's the internal control finding that's been basically a recurring finding. For the city, basically what that would mean is we as the auditors, not only perform the audit, but we draft the city's financial statements, which is expected to be an internal control finding. So that's kind of your current finding, that's a pretty common finding for a city of your size. The next one is a journal entry review internal control finding. So this year we took a little bit more of a closer look at the manual journal entry process that the city does. And basically what this finding needs is we're recommending that the city put in place a formal process of reviewing all journal entries done. So that's something, kind of a recommendation, have a recommendation, have internal control finding, just putting a process in place for review of those entries. And the third finding is a material audit adjustment. So basically what this finding is, we had to, throughout the course of the audit, make adjusting journal entries that were considered material in nature. Because of the size of these entries, it's related to investments as well as payables at year end, we had to issue this material audit adjustment finding. So those are the findings for, for this year's audit.
I'll just cut it kind of on two and three, Todd and I have been working closely with Tyler C on making adjustments internally, changing process. So we're confident moving forward, we won't see this again, and it was a learning experience, and as was pointed out, that's the point of an audit, it's to. Have a third party come in, take a look at everything and kind of. Get us looking at processes, there was a lot of turnover between me and Tyler throughout the years and sometimes. You know, process got lost and so we, we're, we're taking this very seriously and we're all on the same page with this.
Okay, and then moving into the financial results, so this first graph here, what we're looking at is the city's general fund bond balance, which is in that orange line. Compared to the city's fund balance policy, which is the black line, which is sixty percent of the following year's general fund budget. And then the yellow line there is the general fund budget from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. So what this graph is showing is that the city's unassigned general fund balance is at forty seven point four percent. Of the twenty twenty four general fund budget, so it is under that fund balance policy at sixty percent of the following year's budget.
Oh, sorry, we're gonna take a look at this as well. Tyler noted that most cities go that he works with are at fifty percent, so we're gonna review our peer cities, see if sixty percent. Might be a little bit high of where we need. To be at, and then we'll probably unfortunately have to look at budgeting in this as part of our twenty twenty four budget to get back up to where we need with this recommendation. And we have a policy, so that's gonna be taken, we'll look at that and be.
Yeah, so fifty percent is the most.
But I just noted, part of it is. You know, our, in a dollar wise, we're holding steady in terms of unassigned balance. Of course, our expenses have increased. But part of that is this, what we're putting into the CIP and things, so. I'm, I'm thinking fifty percent seems reasonable for kind of where we're at.
And now this slide there, we're showing your general fund budget to actual results for twenty twenty three, so I'm not left calling this the twenty twenty three final budget. On the middle, you can see the actual results for the year, and on the right, you can see the variance with that kind of budget. So top line and revenues, your revenues did come in about almost six hundred thousand over budget. This was mostly due to the public safety aid received right here, and this was of course unbudgeted, and then also ambulance revenue came in over budget as well. Expenditures were about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars over budget, this was mostly due to, you know, public safety costs and stuff like ambulance, police fire. Main reasons for that variance as well. Some other items, you have the bed strange throughout of a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, one into capital fund. So all, after all this activity, your general fund and fund balance did increase up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In that bottom line, two million dollars is your, your end general fund balance. Now here, just look at your revenues by type over the last three years. Split up between your taxes and your governmental revenues, charges and services, and then other revenue, stuff like investment earnings and kind of miscellaneous things. On the other category, so kind of the biggest. Maybe outlier from year over year, the charge for services, that'd be that ambulance revenue increase from twenty three to, or from twenty two to twenty three. Other more things, overall pretty steady, you know, intergovernmental would have gone up as well, because of public safety, something like that, so. This one I cut off, but we're on the screen, this is the general fund expenditure by type. So this put the, any general government, public safety, public works. Now, for some reason, it's kind of split in half a bit on the slide there, but. I think this one was pretty steady in all categories, except public safety costs increasing. Yeah, there you go, yeah, so pretty steady in all the categories except public safety costs rising.
And I think again, that's just due to. Overtime. That we have last year when we were vacant the position.
Heather, is that pretty consistent with small towns, the public safety being the biggest?
I've seen a lot of, and you know, exciting county, like contracted counties, let's say their police services, like for instance. Like, you know, their cost for the police not back, you're going crazy, I know you guys have contractor police, but. Yeah, pub, public safety costs, I believe, is something I've seen for sure.
So you see more, if we were to contract down, it would be more expensive than having in-house police from what you've seen?
I, I just know that like recently in the cities that, I know there are certain counties, like their. Costs are going to turn up like, I don't know, what percent, but like over ten percent year over year, let's say, so. You know, I've just seen that rise pretty aggressively, I would say.
Okay, thanks.
Here, just looking at your special revenue funds, so city has four special revenue funds. And here you just see the fund balance in twenty three and twenty two, and kind of that change year over year. So here, the special revenue funds overall increased in fund balance by a hundred and forty thousand, mostly due to expenses in the Ford Authority Fund in twenty twenty three. And then here looking at your capital project funds, so currently the city has four capital project funds, again, you'll see that. Change from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty two, so the big increase being the twenty twenty three street project in twenty twenty three. And that would just be due to, you know, a spent up proceeds for that street project that you're running, causing a large increase, so. This year, we just kind of point out the city's main capital improvement fund, fund balance, and how those reserves have been building up. Over the years, in twenty twenty three, you ended at about a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar fund balance.
Don't worry, we just agreed to spend a good chunk of it.
The rack is going down.
And then here's the city's three current open debt service funds as of twelve thirty one twenty three. And just the future debt service obligations, the, the twenty thirteen bond did mature earlier in twenty twenty four, right? And now looking at your enterprise funds, so these slides will have the same format, where you're gonna see the operating activity the last four years at the top. So operating revenue in the orange, and your operating costs in the yellow, and your debt, your debt payment is in the black. And then on the bottom there, what you're gonna see is your cash balance over the years, and then that, that. Black line there is like a target balance of half of your operating costs, so just kind of like an industry target to get. So your water fund is meeting exceeding that target, and had a positive operating year, increasing cash balance. Which is the same story here for the, for the sewer fund here. So again, you see that operating activity as well as the operating costs and debt payments. And just on the bottom line here, you're gonna see that dip in the, in the operating target, that's due to the maturity of debt. So there's that, that service obligation included in that target balance anymore. Again, you have the sewer fund had a, had a positive year, so the water fund, big increase in cash. And yeah, this is to show their overall cash investments balances by type, so certainly where the, what fund type the cash is held in. And, you know, cash did increase a lot this past year, partly due to just positive operating year. And partly due to kind of what's spent bond proceeds for your projects and stuff like that. Now here, moving on to our key performance indicator section, so this is when we compare the city lots of peer groups. So on the left, and I'll also say that peer groups, we only have data from twenty twenty one, still, we don't have twenty twenty two data yet, so we're kind of, we're showing. You know, your city's stats for twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, but the peer groups, unfortunately, are still two years behind in getting that data from the state. So the first one is your tax rate, so with this graph is showing, I mean, is that. Wabashaw is a little bit below average in tax rate for other cities in Wabashaw County, but above the last four cities. Class four cities being all cities with a population of ten thousand or less in the state. And then taxes per capita, this one showed that Wabashaw is above the average in both, compared to both of those peer groups. And then we have a debt per capita one on the left here. You know, in twenty twenty three, the city issued debt, so that debt per capita number, you know, did of course increase. And then your debt service expenditures as a percentage of total expenditures, this one here decreased. Kind of due to some bond maturing over the years, and also just due to a lot of like capital costs in the last few years, or your total expenditures overall increased. And then here, we're showing your current expenditures per capita, so just all your operating costs, you know, general government, public safety, all those operating costs. A little bit above the average in those peer groups as well, and then of course your capital expenditures per capita, which has been pretty high the last few years, if you have a busy project here. Whereas in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, it was more quiet years, like the projects, so we're below average in those years. And that's all I got, so no questions or comments within the audit.
Questions for Tyler? Thank you, even though we don't have paper and all, the format's familiar, so it's easy to keep up. And I know Tyler, can you take your questions or comments anytime?
Yeah, always, get an email me or whatever, you're always open to that, so.
Just wanted to take, thank Tyler, he's been a huge help to us, he's always willing to give us a recommendation or two, or approach us, or give us a template, so. Really appreciate that, that partnership.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me, have a good meeting.
Yes, good evening. Oh yes, we do, we need a motion to approve the audit presentation, if we have a motion. Motion by Tim, second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and then. I didn't give a presentation, I just wanted to say that the visit to the Capitol was very illuminating, we had a good visit with everybody. We met with chair representatives of the council, of the committee on transportation finance. Representative Hornstein was very positive, was appreciative that we were pedestrianizing pedestrian, I think it was a parcel, and not just sticking a highway through it. Had a good discussion with our representation, there's some, there's obviously political play, you know, always in the legislature, so we're just urging. Representative Alton to remain supportive of the project, she said this is her number one. We won't count these votes before they happen, but we felt positive that we might see at least one of our representatives' votes are a bonding vote, so. Reach out to your representative, she told us how much this project means and how much we'd like to get it accomplished, so that we aren't looking at. Over, you know, overruns of our cost estimates in future years, they were all appreciative to know that we have the five million in hand from the federal government, that is indeed. I think a very important part of this, and Caroline's working with Minda District Six Office to just. Reiterate that we have their support and that's there, and anything else that I haven't. Shared that you wanna?
I can just do my.
Yeah.
Ministry.
Sounds good.
Um, what hasn't been mentioned? The only thing I haven't mentioned is that we've been working hard on the apartment project. Just because the, the city is really involved, I need to reach out to the chamber and eventually the blue shelf on renegotiating our leases. That's kind of a to do item, and then we've just been working on getting ready for the CVP meeting together. And then. The Wabashaw Cala Trail Connection was awarded one point five million dollars for the future trail, but money doesn't come online till twenty twenty eight. And we're waiting on the final amount, so we did a news release on that. And just note, busy first quarter, so there's Darren, okay. Nothing else?
Okay.
I'm just, yeah, just with Minda. We're, me and Brian Mom are working through what could be a strategy to get this funded. It's a confusing project, cause we planned to build the road, but then had Minda on it, so. It's kind of hard if been in a box, but we've, we've got it narrowed down and they're gonna amend our resolutions that we. Put together for hot resolution legislation at the statewide level, so please reach out to our policymakers, they should be made up as soon as they, that three alignment.
All right, in our consent agenda, we're gonna take out the ambulance service paramedic payer. But otherwise, we have Google the March thirteenth regular, state council meeting minutes, the twenty twenty four spring tree order. League of Minnesota Cities Myability Coverage, approval of two HPC member appointments, Bill Juice and Jan Aronions. Fiscal agent for an EV charging project, which is, I don't think this exists yet, but for the future, a future potential for that. Approving, oh, not that one, resolution for the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, the Warmouth House excavation work. The April warrants and approval of a couple days for overnight docking requested by the National Eagle Center, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The move.
First. First by Tim, second by John, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, do you want to get the? Yes, sure. We will, I see Todd and Andy are here, we're gonna take general item, general business item ten four, so that you guys can stay a vote, it's up to you. So this is the resolution to approve the sale of real property, this is the second street property that we're. Targeted for housing development. Any summary for us?
Yes, I wrote a long summary, but just kind of a reminder that. This, that in two thousand seven, the city acquired this site as future parking for a hotel that was never realized for three hundred and ten thousand. Since then, the site has been used as commuter parking, Grandpa's Bar Boutique, and the Ford Food. Um since then, the site has been used as commuter parking, Grandpa's Bar Boutique and the Ford Food Chair. And then in twenty twenty one, when city council paid for a six thousand dollar repair on the transfer building. Council contemplated the long term intended plan and there was general consensus that, you know, we'd like to see it developed and. Back on the taxes in some fashion or the other, um and then the Wabashaw Quarter Thirty formed a housing task force. They did a study, um and they identified this site as a potential location for future um multifamily housing. Um and then I also actually found that in our twenty sixteen plan, we identified a future market rate apartment as a a goal. Um in twenty, December twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, we released an R F P. Um we received four proposals and Keller Burtman was selected. All four proposals requested a donation of the land to realize the development and as part of the city's matching funds on the project. Um so the financial estate purchase agreement commits the city to selling the property for a dollar. So long as they are able to obtain an award for Minnesota workforce housing program for the project. And again, just to clarify, this is a deferred loan for market rate housing in rural Minnesota. And then um if we don't, we're not successful with the funds, we would not, they would not be obliged to purchase the property. And we would not be obliged to sell it. Um another contingency is that we have approval over final plans and final designs. We're still kind of in flux on the project and the site plan. Um and then we've also been requested by our subcommittee that there's a small group that reviews the final architectural plans. And approves those, the materials and the look of the building, um so that is kind of in there as well. Um just to note that when I, when they proposed their original proposal, we were at fifty units, then we came back and we were at forty four. And now kind of looking at the site, we realize, they realized that underground parking was gonna work better than ground level parking. So we're at fifty units, it ends up being the same ratio of parking, um so. Anything you all want to add to my summary here?
I know one of your concerns, Carolyn, was that that alleyway by the little house there, you know? There is a full twenty eight feet from the building, so you know, we have plenty of room there. And then also, when you were talking about the uh, we originally had twenty eight uh units for parking in the basement, but with this plan, we have thirty eight. So you know, that actually makes a difference that way, even though we have more apartments, but when you have larger apartments like two bedrooms or three bedrooms. You're using one point, you know, five instead of just one per, you know, so some people have a car and some people have two, you know. So nobody, if anybody has any questions, you know, on the end, I can answer, but I I think you guys, I think you've put together a pretty good plan, so.
Yeah, who knew we'd be here by this time? Any, any questions for Caroline or for Bob?
Yeah, just two points of clarification, um just from the feedback that I got from the public, and there's no public here to really tell it to, so. Uh if there's anybody listening, um the financing uh application that we just approved. In a consent agenda to go out and get this money, um some people had in their minds that this is some kind of subsidy for rents. And that that's not the case, um I, what I compare it to is there's a reason there's not a housing development between Fourteenth Street and the Justice Center. Is because it's completely unaffordable to build, you would never be able to sell lots um for anyone to purchase and build. It 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 just doesn't shake out there, that's why there's no development. Um by the time you get water, sewer, streets, um you'd have to sell each fifty foot to eighty foot lot by, for like a hundred grand. And that's before there's a house on it, um so what Carolyn explained to me and and correct me if I I screwed this up, is that. Um to correct this, that's why this rural funding is in place, so that, you know, in the Twin Cities, you can get two, three thousand dollars in rent. But we can't do that, and so this money's available for us to go get, to put the building up. And make it so people can can rent it, and so people like this can actually build it without completely losing everything. You know, it wouldn't be worth it, so, um just that, what I wanted to clarify, um just for the public, and then. Um kind of hand in hand with that, if you guys could answer a question, um the other feedback to me was, we have this. Generalized term that everyone uses called, they call it section eight housing, um basically hug or subsidized housing. Um and there's a lot of feedback that I've gotten that that's not what we want here, um we want, you know, like, like, like your plan is. So do you, can you just touch lightly on your, you know, how is this gonna be? Housing that's not gonna be like vocally related um with subsidies from the using tax dollars?
Sure, so we do not accept section A, what this is, is when we, so we haven't done, like, all of our buildings, we thought we'd pay the TIF. But because of the interest rate that's so high right now, the cost of labor, cost of everything, it's not really doable for us to build. So by giving that grant from the state, what it does is it helps us to build a quality building that has all the things that you would put into it in any other city. Plus, we're able to keep the rent up, so you know, you add that into our project, and all of a sudden, you know, you know, you're not looking at this, this huge. Uh a huge loan that, you know, you're thinking, well, how are we gonna make the money that we're actually getting money from the state that makes up for that? But um it's, you know, when we say either workforce housing or multifamily, which we have eight buildings that are multifamily, and then we have. One building that is kind of fifty and up. And um we do not accept section A in any of our buildings, but everybody pretty much lives cohesively together, it's kind of. A- actually, the older people love living with younger people, younger people love having older people around. Um it's really kind of really doing a mix, and we've been doing that since two thousand seventeen, so that's something we're really familiar with.
Okay, I just wanted you to touch on it, thank you.
And I have a question, um now, in terms of public, uh the R B O and and uh stuff like that. Their concern at from the apartment to the whole, to the R B O is, uh is that company, can I interrupt?
Yes, we're in, we're a multifamily council unit, so within that, we have, um. There was one little thing where Carolyn had asked, maybe we could rent help with community room or something, or people downtown or things like that. But other than that, it's a multifamily, people live there to do a one year lease, um you know, they live in the community, then, you know, it's. It's not meant for people to come and go like that, so. Oh yes, it is, cause I, I think that is, you know, it's scary for people, all of a sudden, think your whole town's gonna be, to the location right now.
To provision for not letting sublets and mortgages.
Right, right.
Another piece to kind of piggyback on Brian, what what the public's, not directly, it's a good thing for the public to understand. Is what a good project this is with regards to infrastructure, I don't know if you want to share what Mike Dubonny explains it, yeah, I know every time we see a new home built, we get excited. It means, you know, either somebody's lucky enough to be building a new house, or maybe we, maybe we're lucky enough to even have a family here, but. Mike always reminds Tony, every new house costs us money because of the infrastructure required, so this is a very different project in that regard.
So the other benefit of the project is that we're hooking up to existing sewer and water on an existing street. Where if we were to build between criminal justice and Fourteenth, we'd be adding roads that Tony's plowing, new sewer water that we're maintaining. And replacing, so by urban infill, theoretically, it's not. Costing, I'm trying to think if someone's gonna cost me, call me, but in terms from a road and utility, it better utilizes the existing streets that we have. As part of the project, we have an agreement with the TIF that we're gonna replace the sidewalk. Replace the alley and Tony and I are exploring, we're in the electrical as well, because it'll just look better and then trying to maybe add some. Trees in the sidewalk is part of the the planning as well to improve it.
Old is that infrastructure down there, more.
Yeah, yeah, probably old, I mean.
I think it's probably newer than Main Street lights.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would imagine, yeah, I was just curious, how many units, you know, and, yeah.
I think the stats on the water pressures were very good.
Yeah, one of the first thing, one of the first things Bob asked, I think, was what's the water pressure? The other piece that I haven't shared maybe with this group, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but, you know, we didn't know what developers would come to the table when we invited this proposal. And and what I think is key for our community to understand is, we aren't just, everything that Caroline said is true, but we aren't just squeezing this project down there. That is a highly desirable location for for market rate rentals. To be able to probably see the river in some cases, walk all up and down downtown, I mean, it's a, it's really an exceptional site that we have to work with. We're very, very lucky that we're not trying to build something on the edge of town, that we don't have any choice, but to build roads and sewer and water, because we are. Fortunate to have this this parcel right in the center of our downtown, so it isn't, I think for some people, it's been viewed as, why are we wedging this in? It feels like a desperate move, we're very, very lucky to have a site like this, that's so close to our, the many, the many things that are wonderful about the center of our community, so. We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Sorry, we have a motion from John, a second from Jean, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Thanks, Bob and Andy, I know you kind of, she officially said you felt like you were, you know, playing catch up, just having to work with this grant. That we feel the same way, we're so appreciative for your ability to be responsive, that was one of the things, of course, we were looking for when we selected the developer, so thanks for.
We appreciate all the thanks too.
The pace, yeah. All right, and now we go back to the regular order of things, so we've got general business ten two, which is the twenty twenty four millon overlay project, is, Brian, is this for you to?
Yeah.
Speak to it?
Caroline said to keep this short, short. I'll try to just run, maybe uh, I can sum it, so, this is the project of the type being done in the past, most recently, uh twenty nineteen. Just kind of a standard millon overlay street maintenance project. Uh streets include Market Street West, between Allegheny and Third, Franklin, between Market Street West and Second Street East. Then Jethro's Avenue, a short little stretch there through the market, and Third Street. Um in the report, there are photos of the condition of the existing street, and and by looking at those and being familiar with the area, you can tell. These streets are ready for.
Give me one second, it's kind of quietly loading here, Brian, and here's the map. Market Street, Franklin Street, and then which would be? Or must not be. Casting screen, okay, casting tab. Operating.
Well, well, Caroline will find looking for that, um so it's basically a millon overlay project, uh we'll be milling out the existing asphalt. Putting new asphalt down, replacing the asphalt curb that's there, some spot repair of the concrete curb and gutter, and then adjusting valves. And castings for the city utilities, uh no utility work underneath the street, uh sewer water, or any bad, or, pardon me. Some spot repair if there's some uh some damage, um pretty minimal, but.
And then under presentation?
Yeah.
It's in that report, yeah.
That's big, I take it.
Estimated costing improvements around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, be funded with the cap, existing capital improvement funds, and then assessments similar to other projects. Uh we have a draft assessment role, preliminary assessment role, based on the estimated costs. Uh that works out to about sixty six thousand dollars to be assessed, uh that works out to about sixteen hundred dollars for residential parcel. For reference on that, the last time you did a project uh with a residential assessment was thirteen hundred dollars. If you figure three percent inflation between twenty nineteen and now, that works out to almost exactly the number that we're talking about. So the dollars are very reasonable compared to the past projects we've done. Um schedule for the project, uh there's a schedule in the uh in the report. Uh tonight, uh your action, if you choose to proceed, would be to order the report that we've already done. So kind of a technical resolution, and then pass the resolution accepting the report, and uh there's the photos of the street. Uh accepting the report and calling for hearing on the improvement, that would be the improvement hearing where we would send out notice to all the residents. Uh who would be uh potentially assessed and affected by the project, and we would uh share information with the project about them. Um and then uh after that, and would uh order the improvement, which is the decision to move forward with the project, you know, take bids on it. Uh we'll prepare the plans and specs, take bids in June, or excuse me, in July, early July. And then uh you would move into the assessment process, uh target assessment hearing for early part of August. Um and then begin construction in the late part of the summer, which would uh hopefully time out with when they would be doing some paving. On the Main Street project and hopefully get some autonomous of scale there, the paving operations. Um I think that's all I needed to cover.
Thank you.
The curves you were gonna, two and a half of those asphalt curves, same way they are. Yeah, same way they've been done on the other streets, so.
Uh Market Street east of the old middle school, why isn't that part of it? Market, you mean coming up that hill, horrible.
That's kind of, I think facilities underneath, that it was come out to be almost a million dollars for that block and half.
So none of these, none of these need to be total construction, right?
But that's kind of a separate project, we've been looking at it and figuring out what to do, so.
Might be having a one in a couple of years, can borrow a little bit to do a bigger millon overlay and that block and a half, but we'll, we'll know until we get.
So, yeah, I guess the theory was, um was just kind of all the projects we wanted to come. Going on, we wanted to push out our bid borrowing for more streets a couple of years and bite off what we could do, and so. Yeah, I think that's a good way of explaining, we are, think going up the hill on market definitely is a top priority, but.
This happened to, Tony did a great job in selecting the streets that needed work, and it just so happened that almost exactly fit what you had available. Capital funds with the assessments, um we'll see how the bids come in, hopefully we'll get good bids and.
We have a motion from Dean, do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed same sign, thank you, Brian, thank you, Tony.
All resolutions?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do both, so we shouldn't clarify, I I had that in my head and I lost it, I both pulled up here, so Dean, there's a motion to order the report. Then another one to uh accept the report and call for a public hearing on May seventh, is that your motion? Do we have a motion, do we have a second? With a second by John, all those in favor say aye. All right, we'll look forward to that May hearing. See now mine is lagging, there we go, okay, so our um miscellaneous subdivision and zoning ordinance updates, this is the second read, we've seen this before. Um any questions about this? All right, we have a motion from Brian, we have a second from John, uh any further discussion? All the eager say aye, aye, opposed same sign. These really nice staff efforts make it easy, um now we have the street product pay application number six.
That was just the last in addition, otherwise I would have put it on the center. Brian, this is for work that was done, explain this to me.
It's a really big one, and the reason it's a really big one, because it includes all the street lighting that was done last year. So they did that late in the year and we didn't catch it with the last testament, so that's why it's a big one, it's actually mostly the uh the street lights. And then some of the temporary paving that was done with the intersection of Pembroke, so, street lights are expensive.
The first, can we do the second, is that Jean, yep, we have first from Tim, second Jean, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Since I've been rerouted to getting out of here in in the mornings, there's a bunch of lights.
Yeah, other than the downtown?
Yeah, oh, no downtown, in the new, new lights, okay. I didn't, I'm sorry, I don't know, remember which ones, but in in the alleyway, you can't really go there.
Now we're revisiting the uh city hall logo graphics for this wall, the council chambers, we had two versions. There's a, it's the light foreground, background, and then a dark background, does anybody have a strong graphic, does want to make a motion? You have a motion for a dark background, I'll second that, make sure, for further discussion, any further discussion?
All right, so Brian's one cautionary tale was that black might not be exactly black. But you wouldn't be able to tell unless you got a flip, so.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed same sign.
I was thinking, uh, uh for this pile here, in the doorway, we should move some.
And I keep looking at that, is that getting bigger?
If we.
Broken there?
Well, you need to cover it up with metal.
It looks like it's hard to, we've heard it fits something.
I did ask Larry Kennedy, he just hasn't come yet and I couldn't get advice. He doesn't do that work. He doesn't style it. Also, you know, but other than that.
Well, we'll, we'll. Jack, your pink, let me get that. Uh, then we had a item added by Tony, which is the signage for the athletic field. Like, maybe we've all seen it. It's very nice. I've seen it.
We went back and forth with the park board and, uh, fundraising committee.
It's really nice. It's better than anything that I saw as an example when we were looking.
We had like, I don't know, fifteen different examples and then kind of got it spread away and matching. It turned out pretty good. Um, it's not gonna be sticking up there, you know, so kind of a high sword, which is trying to keep it low.
Still didn't work. Okay, hold on. I have it up there, but.
I think I can blow it up to. It's really classy. I like the design. It's. It's organized by sort of category of donors. If it needs to be reprinted, it's not some fancy thing with a million. This is the.
The donor sign is like seven hundred dollars. So that is one month with the majority. This is about five thousand dollars. The other thought we had was it would be nice to slowly replace these throughout the city so they're unified, but at five thousand dollars a pop. It's gonna be maybe just bit by bit over time.
The question I have is, um, I like the sign, but do we really need to take donors on everything? I mean, it's nice to bank on and stuff, but they already, I don't think they're asking for.
Some of them are. Yeah. Yeah, if they make a chair of a, if they make a chair of a donation as a business, they they need to see that acknowledged somewhere.
So this is a monitor side, but the door side's different.
Separate. That's more like a plaque, but they they copy each other really nicely.
Took care of that.
Yeah.
That will be on the side of the the central warming house earned by the concession stand.
We have through recognize the DNR on the project and I thought you took care of that.
That's tough.
That's, yeah.
Tony, where's it at? Where's it gonna be put?
Yeah, so if you drive around the corner, you get to the central, we were thinking about putting it over here by by the tennis courts. But the major, majority of the park is over here and we kind of wanted it centered. So like when you drive up to the. There's a main sidewalk where everybody can go in and I think we're just gonna put it on one side.
Are you talking about this sign or the donor?
The donor sign's been on the warming house.
That'll be based on the pickleball, the tennis courts, so. Big spot on the wall.
The signage, when you start getting people here and games and stuff like that, there needs to be something out here. We're gonna come in in both directions. And then it's gonna be a big mess.
There's an entry sign there and there's a exit sign over there, but.
Set back like this, you need something that's, you know.
I can tell you, most fields don't have good signage.
You drive around for half an hour, try to find it.
Yeah, probably for this reason, it's like, where is the entrance?
At least I added it to Google.
We could do something like a form of street sign up here that just sits out, but they're complex. Cause like here, you're coming by the main drag, you know, they won't see everything. We got signed, we got one, we're gonna buy Paul Street. And then I think that here is Sue entrance, you know, the bike path, and then the dog station would be there. The sign. What's the question? Uh, ninety-two inches wide. What that?
I mostly approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? A second? Tim's second and John, any further discussion?
I think I will, I will double check the dimensions because I know the park's word is like we want it low to the ground and that curtain looks. Like it's higher, but regardless, that's that's been established, so I'll double check that.
Alright.
So you're forty-two inch sign on a sixty-seven inch.
That's nice. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Looks really good, thank you. That's gonna be so nice. Again, don't forget, May thirty-first, four to seven.
Yes.
With a new calendar for the Oprah. And now we have a motion to, or I would entertain a motion to approve the following donations to the library. Oh, yes, thank you. Brian is sitting here online. You gotta check paramedics, okay, um, that one got moved. So Ryan, if you'd like to give an update in general, I can cut you off, or just go spare member.
Alright, so, update in general, uh, March, this year, we had seventy-two calls. We're at two hundred and four for the year, we're eighty-four calls on how we were last year through March. So we've been doing.
Uh, of the eighty-four, I mean, are they calls for service or transfers?
Uh, that's just all calls for service. So if you want cancer of the. So I don't know how much, what the difference is in transfers at all, uh, we've taken thirty-nine entries. So far, obviously.
I just, I should have asked, are we taking more transfers or are we taking more calls for now?
Um, we're taking more transfers. Well, it's a little bit of both. Our checks are high on our calls, I have one call around two.
What transfer percentage, uh, are turned down during the week?
Uh, we're just under fifty percent.
Just under fifty?
Yeah, so we've taken thirty-nine, we've turned out forty-one. And some of those, uh, of the turn downs have been ones from, we don't know which junkies. And some of them, we've got a super red ring, uh, so there's. There's some of those turned off, aren't just behavior from, from services as well.
I wish in the future we go to the pound, we can refer and pay them. So we really didn't turn it down, we're never gonna pay it. You know what I mean? So makes our numbers look a little skewed, but. Cause we are taking more transfers.
Oh, yeah.
But if we're not on a call, it's forty, we're not gonna take any of the forty. So I guess life will probably be dying in their column. But anyways.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, like the red wiggle, we might pay.
Yeah. So I mean, for for so far this year, we only had four from the mall.
Yeah, I mean, so, okay.
It seems like you haven't had as many from Olive City here.
Um, we've only had one so far on Lake City this year. Final correction, we've had four out of the hospital in Lake City. We've had one mutually called through the city.
Got it. Oh, yeah. So Ryan, do you think the paramedic recruitment would be better than the EMT? Cause I I think. We're seeing more activity for ALS transfers, which is the increase of revenue, which I think is good.
So I thought this was a no, right?
I, well, I went through too, so I guess.
The reason, the reason why I put is just, just was looking at the numbers in that aspect. I want to know where we're at. We haven't heard the numbers for a while. And budgetary wise, you know, what is the increase, uh, what is the increase going to be, you know, with, you know, is it gonna be overtime with this, you know, and stuff like that, so. Um, that was, that was my biggest questions with this, and it's where budgetary wise, how's the difference?
I don't have any exact numbers.
Yeah, but it's, I think the.
Three dollars more an hour.
Yeah, it wasn't, we kind of discussed it at ambulance commission and it was, you know, three dollars more an hour, so I think.
The cost, you know, the the cost that is driven into the paramedic and what we would give back in our revenues.
So we know, is that make us competitive with our region or?
If you're still low.
We're still low, uh, from what, you know, I I know rigor, we might certainly help.
But I think it'll be less tough. And there's, and this is a paramedic state, so we're seeing more and more medics in the area EMTs. And the, and the EMT rate is considerably less regionally than what the medic rate would be, so. I'd give a better chance recruiting a medic than sitting waiting for a good EMT.
Yeah, I would assume the cost would be greatly offset by the revenue we give to ALS.
Sorry, through February, um, I think I have a March numbers from November, we're taking that, but. We're averaging thirty, just shy of thirty-five thousand dollars a month average question for revenue for the first two months. So we've mapped it all, projected to make about four hundred and, or four hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, we budgeted three hundred and thirty.
So what's the annual salary difference between the?
Reconnect to the server and I'm getting there, but it's, yeah. So. I think one thing that's gotten brought up, uh, meetings is. If we have, with the way we schedule, it's not gonna be always possible to only have. The paramedics paired up with an EMT for. Can you explain that?
Because that's what our, all our part-time employees work the most, so. Um, just the, um, the numbers that we have right now, you know, um, with awesome leader, we only have. We have Elliot as a part-time EMT, um, and then we have, uh, Tina. So with those two, we already have more paramedics than we have EMTs as full of part-time. So it's just inevitable with. The numbers that we currently have, that it's, we're going to have two medics on at a time. Uh, I know we detached the ALS transfers, uh, when we had two on and still checking the paramedic back in town, so we still have. Very much transferred.
So the difference for the year is seven thousand dollars. So forty-seven thousand dollars, forty-seven, eight, sixty-one. I have it twenty-two, fifty-seven for a paramedic. And then an hourly rate for a EMT is nineteen thirty-six. So. Three dollar pay difference.
So you're projecting almost a hundred thousand dollars extra revenue through the first two months, so that's pretty, that's a pretty good deal.
Well, if you get another paramedic, who knows, that's gonna probably go up, so we take more, so. I move to approve the decision.
I I was second.
We have a second. We have first from Tim and a second from Jean. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to just, I wanted against it. I just brought it up.
Educates me when things are full up, it's never a problem.
Yeah, throughout this year, you know, we we've upstacked this, you know, not, you know, stacking improvements with the service. I want to make sure we're enters are right.
Good, so, thanks for hanging in there, Ryan. And now, donations. And they're all for library. Uh, one hundred dollars a memory of that hater by Phil and Kate Carey, twenty-five dollars. Mary Aron's sister by Harry Fox, five hundred dollars by Jan, Jane Hager, and a hundred dollars to the Mononos donor. We have a, one of the several locations, a first from Ryan, a second from John. All those in favor say aye. Opposed same sign, and we can enter the motion to adjourn. We have a second from John. All those in favor say aye.